After the meeting of October 17th, 2016. Let the minutes show that all commissioners are here and present. The first number of business, or I guess the order of business is to take care of the order of business. Is there any change?
Mr. President, at this time, there is no change.
Okay, there's no change to the order of business. So we'll take a...I'm looking, I guess, for a motion to approve the order of business.
Some move, Mr. President.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion about the order of business? Hearing none will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda the commissioners want to discuss? The minutes, accounts payable, checkbook, or the gas extension agreement?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move into...we have only one timetable agenda, and that's at 5:00, so we'll move into the non-t timetable agenda. And the first item on that is Dickinson Catholic Schools Loan Agreement. City Attorney Krip.
Mr. President, members of the commission, I was able to speak with the Council for Dickinson Catholic Schools regarding the loan agreement. And then, in your packet this week, you saw the assignment that we were missing at the last meeting was included, where American Bank Center essentially takes over all the responsibilities of the city as a facilitator of that bonding and those revenue bonds. So I reviewed everything and spoke with their council, and I find everything to be in order. And so, if you have any questions, I can attempt to answer those now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Krip. Do any of the city commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Krip?
What's the resolution number?
The resolution number would be 34-2016.
Any questions other than that for Ms. Krip on this loan agreement with Dickinson Catholic Schools?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve 34-2016?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes to approve the loan.
Mr. President, I'd like an update from Mr. Glazer here regarding the Trinity Building, please.
Okay.
Good evening, President Decker and commissioners, and thanks again. I'm getting used to coming to your meetings, and I appreciate taking some time, and thank you for approving the resolution. That means a lot to us. That's the final leg of our financing, so thank you very much. Your support's greatly appreciated. Very excited to stand here tonight and give you a little update on construction. I walked through the building this morning, and it's truly amazing what's happened the last couple of weeks. So we're over 80 percent complete with construction, and the south side of the building, which is the two-story Fine and Performing Arts Center, they're a couple of weeks away from completion. So we are shooting for...we're hosting the regional girls volleyball tournament November 7th, 8th, and 10th, and we're hoping to be able to use our commons, 4,700 square foot commons and concession area. So that'll be the first public access to really get a peek of the new building. Along on that first floor with the Fine and Performing Arts Center is the Black Box Theater, the Music Room, practice rooms, restrooms, faculty offices, dressing rooms, and that all is also on schedule to be completed by November 7th. So again, we're very excited for that. And then, the three-story East Academic Wing, that's on schedule for completion late December, and we are on schedule to move in to the entire facility on Tuesday, January 3rd. So again, we've...or they have beefed up the crews, and a lot of crews or subcontractors are working seven-day weeks right now, and they brought in some additional crews for the exterior envelope, so that again is on schedule as well. So again, I'd entertain any questions, but we're very excited. We can see some light at the end of the tunnel, so it's really fun to watch the progress unfold these last few weeks.
Mr. Glazer, if someone wanted to make a donation for the fundraiser and so on, do they contact you at the school?
They certainly could, yes. Either myself or Mike Giderowski. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Glazer?
I'd certainly invite you to come up for a tour. Anytime, please come up, and I'd love to give you a tour.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item up is the Stark County Job Development member and its consideration to appoint a member. Ms. Krip?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mrs. Carlson, do you know more about this?
The discussion was that this is an add-on to the regular committee assignments, and it's looking at replacing Joel Frenzel's position that was there before. So they are looking for a city commissioner to be present on their Stark County Job Development Authority. Other than that, that's as much as I know.
Commissioners, if you look at the Dickinson Commission Committee Assignment Sheet, it's presently, it's not on there. So this will be an add-on, that we will be adding this position, and I guess the discussion I think we need to have is if there is a commissioner, a present commissioner, that would want to be on this, this job, I guess it's Job Development Committee. If not, are we going to wait and maybe, with the newest member coming on, assign that to them? Because right now, the newest member will have...it shows four right now, but they'll actually have three, because I will remain on the Regional Airport Authority, but they'll have three, so this would give them a fourth if we want that, or unless, like I said, unless there's a commissioner that wants...
Mr. President, I'd volunteer to serve on that board. I see some of the members are the same members that I sit on the Stark Development Board, so...
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that?
I would make a nomination for Carlson to sit on that board.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur?
Aye.
And since you're nominated, I won't ask for you...since you're already nominated, I won't ask for your vote, because you kind of nominated yourself, so I will vote aye also to put you on there.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, thank you for stepping up, Mr. Steiner. The next on the agenda is the Fee Schedule Resolution, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. President and commissioners. This is just to...this is the proposed rate changes that you had in your packet. It is for various license permits, franchises, and charges for conducting certain activities. It's been gone through the Executive Committee, and these are proposing the new changes here on some of them. Some of them haven't been updated for quite a few years, and some are just being changed, and some are being decreased on there. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Do any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Carlson or any of the other staff on these changes?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Carlson, what did you base the increases on?
A lot of these increases are based on just the fact of they have...either haven't been increased for many years and/or on the various improvements that have been going on throughout the city. So some of those are in there. I'm not that familiar with all the rate changes and everything, Commissioner LaFleur, because of the fact I haven't been here, that I would have used Gary, or maybe Craig can help me, but this...that's what I understand through the budget meetings and things, that that's what the reasons for.
Okay.
President Decker, commissioners, we had some fee increases on some of our application fees, you know, for planning and zoning applications. A lot of that was based on research from other cities in the area, just to make sure that we were not being excessive in those fees, but being in line with other communities. So we're compensating ourselves for staff time involved processing the applications. Some of the fee increases were through rate studies that we did, especially on some of the sewer changes. And then, the one that we increased that would be considered maybe an engineering fee, it's really an enterprise fund is the stormwater fee. And we had an old ordinance that talks about surcharges, and it was really difficult to administer...there was a formula for larger parcels, and so we went through, and it was really an across-the-board increase on the stormwater fees for residential and commercial properties. A lot of that was based on the stormwater master plan that HTR completed for the city earlier this year. Not that there's an exact formula to it, but we know we have over $20 million of stormwater projects to do, and the fund that we had wouldn't come nearly close to that, so we have increased the stormwater fees as well.
Any other commissioners have any questions for either Ms. Carlson or Mr. Kupas on the rate changes?
Mr. President, I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the rate changes?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, this would be approved by Resolution Number 35-2016.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve 35-2016 and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. LaFleur?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
No.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. I guess Resolution passes. The next item on the non-t timetable agenda is the Simple Assault and Domestic Violence Ordinance. Ms. Krip?
Mr. President, members of the commission, Ordinance Number 1621 was first introduced at your last commission meeting. It adds the changes to our city code to reflect what is going on with the requirements of the sentry code, predominantly being that counseling or anger management component, which we have been including in our plea agreements and sentencing requests, because we had the right to do that under sentry code, but just bringing that city code in line so that we don't have any discrepancies between the various levels of law.
Thank you, Ms. Krip. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Krip on the ordinance change?
Who to approve Ordinance Number 1621?
Okay, we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1621?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? And Ms. Krip, we had the public hearing on this, the last meeting, right? Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Move on to...we have some reports from Ms. Krip.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there are three items to report on tonight. The first is the Sewer Backup Elimination Fee and Policy on the resolution that you just passed regarding the fee schedule. One of the fees that was removed entirely was the 50 cents that is assessed on every water bill regarding the sewer backup fund. So what happens in part of the code right now is that if a resident experiences a sewer backup in their home or commercial building, they can ask, they can turn the incident over to the city, and the city asks for a determination as to whether the city was in some way at fault. If there is fault, then there's a process for that, but if the city was not at fault, and the resident still experienced that incident, oftentimes, they don't have homeowner's insurance to cover those. And so, in the code, there was a fund that this fee went into where residents could ask for up to $10,000 for recoupment of expenses relating to cleaning or replacement of non-antique or specialty items in their home that were affected by a sewer backup event. And eliminating that fee, and my understanding is that in the workshops for the budget that you all had, that there was discussion of eliminating that component, so that's why it was eliminated as part of that fee schedule resolution. And this is just an initial discussion to introduce the topic, and an ordinance repealing that section of the code will be forthcoming at future meetings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Krip. Does anyone on the commission have any questions about this elimination of the fee and the policy? Ms. Krip? I think we discussed this quite in detail in the budget meeting, so I think most of the questions were asked then. I guess we can move on to the liquor license workshop.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you know, at your special commission meeting, there was discussion of holding a workshop of sorts to discuss what to do with the current liquor license, compliance checks, and compliance issues, and just want to check in to...that was something you still wanted us to pursue and schedule, and get that moving for you?
I personally, I would like it to happen. I think we need...there's issues in the liquor license ordinance that we need to address. I know there's other concerns within the community that people have brought forth. I think we need to address some of those and maybe clean it up a little bit.
I agree, Mr. President. I know there's a newly-formed liquor association, hospitality association, that's dealing specifically with this, so those workshops would be very good to work with the business owners, open the communication line.
Commissioner LaFleur, are you aware...are all the liquor license holders members of that, or is it just like...
No. No, I'm not sure how many. I think there's a total of 43 licenses, but they've got a good number that have joined or are going to join. So having this communication will be great, a great opportunity.
Likely what we will need to do is pick a time and date to do that, and then we'll notify all of the...we'll send a form letter to all of the liquor license holders, so everyone has equal opportunity to participate, and likely function it as a town hall of sorts, where you can hear input, is that the style you'd like, or how would you like it formatted, I guess is my question.
Well, I guess we have to look at how many out of the commission...I would guess no more than two commissioners, if we're not going to make it an official commission.
Yeah, if you do have more than two, we can notice it as a public meeting. That's not a problem at all.
And I guess I would open it...I know I want to be part of it. I don't know if any of the other commissioners do. I know Ms. Jennings had voiced that she wants to, and then if it's...I guess Mr. LaFleur will probably be off the commission by then, and he's part of that group, so...
Yeah, I think if we reach out to that as new association, I think Brian Nelson is the president.
Yes.
I would contact him to get the ball rolling. I think they've got a lot of good ideas.
I don't want to force the liquor license to become part of this, but I would strongly encourage it in the event they would have another infraction and so on. You know, if something that might have been discussed at that meeting that they were not made aware of, you know, more information you get, the better off you are.
We'll also likely let Chief Osinger know if they want to have one of their compliance officers represent their part of the process. I know Mrs. Becky has indicated she also wants to be part of this discussion, so it may be several weeks out before we can book a date and then get everyone properly noticed and give everyone time to get on calendars and things. So we're probably looking at mid to end November, if that's acceptable, and we'll get a formal date kind of nailed down, but unless there's...you wanted to talk about them now, we could probably do a Monday alternate from a commission meeting. She'd be meeting on the...my only request is that it is after 4:00, 4:00 or later.
And I guess I'll open up to the commission again how many other members want to participate. That way, we know if we need to notice it as a special meeting, or if it's just Ms. Jennings and myself, then we can just have the town hall type discussion, I guess.
Right.
Or roundtable discussion.
I think the more input, the better.
Okay, I guess then we'll...
We'll go ahead and notice as a public meeting, and then, not assuming any action, we'll still make place those at the meeting, but that just...we'll notice that it's a workshop style, somewhat to the budget, I think is how we handle it, so...
Okay, that would be perfect.
Great, so that's how we'll proceed on that thing, and like I said, get that scheduled and get moving on that.
And then you have one more item in the reports?
I do. So as you know, Mrs. Gos has indicated that she intends to pursue civil litigation, and so just as a primer, and we've discussed this at the city staff level as well, it'll be especially important in the coming weeks and months that if you have your cell phone set to automatically purge messages, that you turn that feature off. Now that we know there's a potential threat of litigation, we have a duty to preserve records. So if you need to screenshot text messages, and then make sure you get those to city staff for record-keeping purposes, so if we do have any discovery requests in the future, we can adequately and fully respond. Same thing with emails, if they automatically purge out and you don't have a city email account that you're using, making sure that you keep those, or again, print and then provide records, just so that we have every possible record that could be requested, and we don't lose anything. And then, as you mentioned, you guys are obviously aware that if more than two of you speak on an issue, there's an open meeting violation, and so again, that will be very important going forward, that if there's any talk about any of the threatened litigation, that those go through proper meeting channels, and we don't violate any rules that way. And then there's, of course, the issue of attorney-client privilege, and so if there's any specific issues we have, being cognizant of if you discuss those with anyone outside of legal counsel, or those that need to know those facts, you can waive attorney-client privilege on a particular issue without necessarily intending to, and so just making sure that you're keeping those conversations regarding any confidential information. Again, more so once litigation starts. We have, you know, duty to turn over records through open records requests, things like that, but there may be confidential information subject to that litigation. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, and we can discuss those issues on a case-by-case basis, but I just essentially wanted to give a civil litigation primer on record retention, so we don't have any issues.
All right, thank you, Ms. Krip. Are there any commissioners that have any questions for Ms. Krip about the process? Okay, well, then we'll move on. We have a few minutes before our timetable, and we have nothing in fire or police departments. We'll move into engineering. Mr. Kupas?
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, can I have my mic?
Can you hear him now?
Yes. Okay. First report is an update on some floodplain updating that'll be happening in and around Dickinson. I don't have a timeframe for this, but we've been in communication for the last six or eight months with the State Water Commission, who's just finalized some dollars they've received from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to do a remapping of the floodplains in Dickinson. So most of the floodplains in Dickinson, besides the Hart River, the Dickinson Drainage Ditch, the main channel that goes through town, they're what's called an approximate Zone A floodplain. So FEMA, back when they started doing floodplain modeling, said, you know, we don't have the time to model all these floodplains. We think this is probably a floodplain, drew a line on a map, it's an approximate Zone A, they call it. So if you think that you're not in that floodplain, you need to go through quite a bit of effort and do some engineering studies to say, yeah, I'm really not in the 100-year floodplain here. Developers hate them, there's a lot of work for them to go through, they're just kind of cumbersome to manage. So they've gotten some money now to remap and model all of the floodplains in Dickinson, all of the drainages that may or may not be floodplains, and they've went through a selection...excuse me, a selection process, and have hired Houston Engineering, sorry. So I might not be able to get through this here. So Houston Engineering will be doing the floodplain modeling for the State Water Commission, and they've set November 12th as a kickoff meeting, and there'll be the county, the city, State Water Commission, Houston, and other interested parties, assuming the Stark County Water Resource Board will be there, and potentially other groups interested in the floodplain. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Well, the map anyway, if you could see, the blue lines are channels that have detailed studies done already. The pink lines are channels that are identified as approximate floodplains, and those will be the ones that will be studied and mapped in more detail. The red line there is the corporate limits of Dickinson, so you can see this extends quite a ways outside of the city limits as well. But it would be valuable, I mean, when we saw growth this last boom, that's where our development happens, is outside, a lot of times, outside of our corporate limits, so it'll be nice to have those areas identified. These might not be exact limits of the study, I think that'll be further refined as we move into the process, starting with that November 12th meeting. When we have a time and date set, we can sure send out an invite to the commission if any of you might want to attend as well. I don't see the 5:00 timetable presented, so if anyone had any questions on the floodplains, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I could move on to our next report.
Any questions for Mr. Kupas on the floodplain? Go ahead, I don't see him either.
Okay. The next report I have is just a project update as we're getting towards the end of our construction season here. Wanted to show you visually where these projects are, and also show off some of the new technology, I guess, that the city had budgeted for last year, and it's in the form of new aerial photography. So we contracted with a company called Pictometry, and they flew Dickinson. You can see the tiles when you zoom out. They flew this area of Dickinson on May 3rd, and we got some, what I'd consider very high resolution aerial photography, and the neat thing about this that's maybe different than Google Earth that some of you may have used, is when you zoom in, one thing you might notice, we've added, there's some of our GIS layers, so our parcels, our tax ID parcels are on this mapping, and when you zoom in to a certain level, you get what they call an oblique view at a 45-degree angle. So this is kind of neat, and you can only...not only view it from...this is from the south kind of facing north, but you can face from the east, and if you click again, you can face from the north. So you can really get a good view, a bird's-eye view of any property in town from all directions, and again, you can always go back and view them from straight above. So we think this is going to be really helpful for the assessing department, for fire, for PD, if they ever have a SWAT team call out to a building, they can kind of, you know, study the property before they go in. We're also in the process, or Pictometry is in the process, of outlining all of the structures in town, and then comparing it with an outline of the structures in town from 2013. That was the last time we had aerial imagery flown in Dickinson. And what they're going to use that for is they have a process where they can just do a change finder, and so anytime an addition was added, a shed was added, a deck was added, they'll be able to see that with the click of a button, and it'll help our assessing department go out if they need to go look at any new properties. Instead of just, you know, starting on block one, lot one, they can use this change finder product. So pretty neat software, we're just kind of starting to use it as staff, but I think it's going to prove to be quite valuable. And so within this software, you can do some annotations and draw some lines, so that's what I've attempted to do here with our project updates.
Ms. Kupas, where are you going? Is this going to be available on our website that individuals can use?
Not at this time. We've talked to Pictometry about that. We do have some web-hosted imagery and information through GIS Workshop. GIS Workshop's the company that's been updating our parcel map. As we've grown fairly fast, we didn't have anyone in GIS... As we've grown fairly fast, we didn't have anyone in GIS internally with the city. And so they do some web hosting. It's a possibility and that's something that we'll be in conversations with them. We would like, we've talked to Stark County about it too. It's nice if the public would have one place to go to look at updated aerial imagery. You know, tax ID, tax parcel information is all on here. You can click on any of these parcels. We don't have our water and sewer in here, but you could click on water and sewer, get some information on those lines as well. So it is very handy, but right now, I guess we haven't made the determination to share it with the public. So on lift station fourteen, this is Twenty-first Street and Tenth Avenue East. The lift station here, again, the imagery is from May 3rd. So you can see construction's already started here. Now, this project is essentially complete. Have some cleanup work to do, but the lift station is online, it's running right now. And this lift station serves quite a large area. Oops, I just moved it there. But it really serves a lot of this area that was annexed. The North Industries Annex Station all flows to that lift station. It was very much at capacity. I have the State Avenue Railroad Bridge next, but I'll wait and see if our representative from Ames is able to make it to the meeting. Next project is Lift Station Five. This is on the south side of town. Doesn't fly you there like Google Earth, so you have to kind of know where you're at. But here's the Hart River in southeast, excuse me, southwest Dickinson and Fifth Street southwest. Lift Station Five is, again, substantially complete. It's got online, running, taking flows right now. So that project will be wrapped up this year. Our West Villard Water Main Project, that one doesn't zoom in. But the West Villard Water Main Project was kind of a traffic inconvenience for quite a while here. It was the project for a couple of blocks by Frankie's over to Martin's Refrigeration. That project got paved over the weekend. Again, hooked up, I think the bacteria test just passed for the water mains. So everything should be online or nearly online any day now. Should be open to traffic. They poured the concrete today, probably three days on that. So by midweek or Thursday, Villard from State Avenue to College should be open to traffic. The project at Twenty-ninth Street and Nineteenth Avenue is the project by the middle school. Again, you get a pretty recent view of the middle school here. The project actually extends further than this, but we ran water and sewer from right at the bottom of the screen up along the interim truck bypass, over and up and past Twenty-first Street. So the last week, maybe two weeks ago, the school has been using the sewer line that was installed. They were already hooked up to water, but now they have full city services. This line does extend across Twenty-first Street to the north, making approximately fifty acres developable now. Our next agenda item is going to be an urban service boundary extension for a planned church on the north side of Twenty-first Street that's now able to be served from this sewer line. So that project is substantially complete, again, in service and operational. The street portion of this project is bid. We awarded it at the last meeting, I believe it was. Still in talks with Northern Improvement Company. Undetermined if they're going to start laying some gravel this year or if they're going to wait till the spring. But the completion date for the street then is July 1 of 2017. The exit sixty-one widening, that's the work on Highway 22 over north and south of the interstate. Ongoing work there, you know, they've moved over. They're on the west side of the highway now, of course. And the completion date for that project is the end of the month. So I see quite a bit of work happening out there and I trust they're on schedule to make that deadline. Next project is out at the Public Works Building. It's our eastside tank project. Again, I was telling Commissioner Decker earlier, it's pretty high-resolution imagery. You zoom in and you can see the cone of that tank, the standpipe, the riser piece, and the bowl itself here. And I think if we could all go back in time, we would have just eliminated this piece out of the equation, out of the photo. So kind of a coincidental timing of the photo. But the project, anyway, is moving along. They have it lowered, of course, now. We went through that change order a couple of months ago. The tank's painted. Looking to install the logo as weather allows here. They're doing some painting on the inside as well. And their plan is to have water filling the tank in mid-November. So that project, we pushed pretty hard to get this thing lowered so it could be in service before the winter. And it looks like, unless we get a real cold snap here quickly, that's going to happen. Well, might as well hit Museum Drive, it's next in line, so. The Museum Drive, the concrete reconstruction project from Highway 22 to Sims is lagging. It is behind schedule. We've been in communications with the contractor. They've submitted a new schedule to us and to the DOT. There's DOT funds in this project. And their schedule was to be complete October 29th. Their new schedule puts them 100% complete by Thanksgiving. We're hoping the week of the 14th of November that it'll be 100% concrete pavement, open to traffic by the end of that week. But again, when you put a construction schedule out in November, you're not in complete control of your schedule. So we know that we need some help from Mother Nature on this one. We are working with the contractor on a contingency plan if, in fact, the weather comes into play and they aren't able to finish the project. But they have presented us with, I think, a reasonable schedule to be completed by Thanksgiving. The next project is the East Water Main Ties. And this project is in a couple of different segments, but keep grabbing lines here. But the project goes, it really feeds the tank that we just talked about. So from the tank, it goes over to Energy Drive and down, and then along East Villard. And from Twenty-eighth Avenue, we actually have a water main in place on East Villard. Then there's a small stretch that we needed to fill in here. So this water main is all in, all the water main along East Villard, all the way up to the tank. The connections are made. It's just ready for the tank to be able to receive water and this will start flowing. This is another important project. I might have to move to the podium. My mouse doesn't have the best of coverage from my desk. But it's an important project, too, because it does create a loop. There's a water main in Energy Drive that dead-ended right at the Public Works Building. So now we have a large water main looped all the way around Energy Drive, servicing the tank and all the other developed area in East Dickinson. The next project is our Ninth Street Reconstruction Project. Went from Tenth Avenue East over to Eighteenth Avenue East. We had detoured traffic around that area for most of the construction duration. The project's open to traffic now. The paving's complete, the signing's in, concrete collars have been poured. So that project is complete, except for a little cleanup work. And our Fortieth Street Water Main Project is, not the blue, but the red line. On Fortieth Street, this is Two's Construction. The hub is right here, Highway 22. And what we did, we extended, we had this water main in Fortieth Street that we installed a couple of years ago. This is an extension of that. It ties in at Tenth Avenue, Calvin Drive, 12th, and State Avenue. And so this makes a nice connection now. I didn't put them on the maps, but we have our booster station projects. One of those booster stations is on State Avenue. So it'll be able to increase the pressure. This is higher elevation ground up here. It'll increase the pressure and really creates a pressure zone three. And now this booster station that sits right where the cursor is, will push water up State Avenue over on Fortieth Street. It'll be able to serve all of this area with adequate pressures. That project is complete. They just, I think just today, received their last passing test. So they've made all the connections. It'll be opened up probably tomorrow. The last project that I have is the Cook Meadow Hills Lighting Project. It's the area outlined in blue. This is a special improvement project that I believe the lights went on on Thursday night, was the first night they were on. So I haven't been inundated with too many calls yet, so I think that's a good sign. But the lights are up. If after the meeting you want to take a drive up there to take a look at what the new LED lights look like in a residential neighborhood, those should be operational. We haven't accepted many of these projects. You know, we just are starting to do some walkthroughs for final acceptance where the city will take over maintenance through the winter. But just to give you an update of where the projects are at. Everything's looking pretty good right now, Museum Drive. Like I said, we need some help from the weather, but we're working closely with the contractor. We hope to get that one done this year as well. And I see Ames, I don't see Ames here, but I know they wanted to just come give a brief update to the commission. They've updated you often. The project is very close to completion. It might open up to traffic fully this week even. We have a ribbon-cutting ceremony planned with Ames, the Department of Transportation. All of you will be getting an invite hopefully this week from the DOT. I know the DOT plans on sending management out to the project, but that State Avenue Bridge will be open. It's a huge project for the city. We've been, I know, trying to do this way, way, way before my time. And so it's a real feather in our cap that we got another grade separated crossing over the railroad tracks through oil impact funds. The only dollars we had into that project were about a million and a half dollars of utility relocations that we needed to do now to accommodate the bridge. But that'll be opening up very soon. It's pretty exciting. It's a really nice bridge. Unfortunately, the people who see it the most are just the guy driving the train. But if you do get down on Broadway, it's a pretty sharp-looking bridge. Kind of a nice view of Dickinson when you're up there, too, so. With that, that's all the updates I had on projects. I'd sure open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubus from the commission?
Mr. Kubus, what is the holdup with the Museum Drive project?
Commissioner Jennings, when we started conversations with the contractor, they came back with what they saw as a reasonable schedule. I think they honestly had delays on other projects that were no fault of the cities or of the plans we had. In the letter they offered to us, they just said, here's the schedule. We're not asking for an extension. We don't believe we have any extra days, any extra compensation coming to us. We just didn't meet our schedule. And so I believe it was problems encountered on other projects where they just never really got the workforce to Dickinson to get the job done. They have moved over now. If you've been on Museum Drive since last Wednesday, I think it was, the traffic has moved over. So at least vehicles are driving on new concrete now because the other side of the road was, well, it was the reason we were replacing it. It was shot. And so every time we got a little bit of rain or a little bit of snow like last week, the road was in pretty tough shape. And now the vehicles are driving on the new concrete. They're tearing out the north half of Museum Drive. And like I said, we're working closely with them. I hope we'll get it done, so.
I think there's more work that was being done on the south side of Museum Drive than was anticipated on the north side, correct? I believe we have the sidewalks and.
There was a little bit more. Commissioner Steiner, we did do a little piece of Osborne Drive. But essentially, we'll do the same thing on the north side, too. So I hope they have a little.
You're going to have the colored stamped sidewalk on the north side and so on?
There may not be colored stamps. I'd have to look at the plans again. Our hope was to make that sidewalk on the north side just as wide as we could because once you got west of Sim Street, that's really started a multi-use trail or a shared-use path for the city and then it meanders through the park, Perry Outpost Park. So we wanted to continue that and get as wide a sidewalk as we could in there. So there may not be a stamped boulevard, so to speak, through there. But there will be new sidewalk in areas. Some of it is going to remain. McDonald's sidewalk, where we could save sidewalk, we did.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kubus? Thank you, Mr. Kubus.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to planning. Planning Director Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1622, Urban Service Area Map Boundary Amendment. This is the second reading, as I said. There haven't been any changes since the first reading and staff would recommend approval. You can see on the map, as Mr. Kubus said, it's just northeast of the existing middle school site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hadley. Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Hadley on the Urban Service Area Map Boundary? This is Ordinance 1622.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve 1622.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion by the commission? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lafore?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, well, there's nothing from Building Code Enforcement. Any commissioners have anything they would like to discuss? Hearing nothing from the commission. I would open up to the public. If they have any issues of city concern, not on the agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name, and let the commission know what your concern is for the city. Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close that down. And chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.